...time it takes to get started, the fewer questions they can ask, so. Could we have the candidates up here, please? Oh, they're over here. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the forum for the candidates for the Parkway School District Board of Education. You may be seated. We want to thank Parkway Central Middle School for hosting tonight, for the administration, for sponsoring this event. My name is Nancy Miller. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. Excuse me. We're all volunteers from the League tonight, and as you see, maybe you've noticed, the League since 1973 is not just women, we have men too. So, we were just gonna call it the League of Voters, and then it just sounded funny, so. We left it the way it is. Our timer tonight is Ann Sappington. You wanna hold up the... If you see the button, she will time questions. The introductory statements are two minutes. They have just one minute to answer each question. And then they will have two minutes for a closing statement. Ann will give them a 30-second warning, and then ask them to stop. And if they don't pay attention to her, I'm an old teacher, so I'm not that nice. Okay, so I will also be telling you to stop. The audience, your job, and you have done a super job so far, is to write questions. My goodness, we just have a plethora of questions. In addition, questions that are illegible, embarrassing, hostile, personal, or unclear will not be read. Questions relating to the same topic may be grouped together. In addition, questions which are for one candidate, and I can't find a way to generalize it for everyone, will not be asked tonight. If there are other questions like that, that you need an answer to, it's your job to find these candidates, they're all here tonight afterwards, and ask them, okay? See what else I wanna say before we start. I just found my papers again, so I'm reviewing quickly. Just real quick, we're a nonpartisan organization. We take no opinion on parties or candidates. We are not for or against any of these candidates, or any of the things that you will... any of the people that you will see on a ballot. The forum is a place for you to learn what these people think, believe, how they will be as your school board members. Excuse me. Your job is to listen, be ready to vote. They're not going to debate. This isn't a rally. Usually Parkway forums are wonderful events. You get a lot of information. I ask you not to make any response to their responses. Time that you take up, maybe applauding or anything like that, takes time away from questions. With five candidates and limited time, we just need to get through questions, okay? I would guess that we probably have about 75, 80 questions already, if not more. Yeah, so, okay? We're gonna start? Are we ready to go? And our first question, our first opening statements will come from Ms. Ames.
Good evening. Tell me you can't hear, I'm not sure how this should be positioned, but first, I would just like to say thank you to everyone that is here tonight. I really believe that public education only works if students, teachers, parents, and educators, and taxpayers all have input. And being here and hearing what we all have to say, I think is really important. And so, thank you for taking time out of your evening to be here and listen to what our views are, and what we all would like to see Parkway. I also think that it says a lot about our community and our district, that we have five outstanding candidates, all with different philosophies of education, all with different vocational experience, all with different educational experience, and all with different philosophies, that all have one thing in common, and that is to be involved and serve Parkway, and make sure that it maintains its excellence, and improves in areas where each of us feel it needs to improve. My personal story begins in Parkway way back in the 80s, when I was a student. I graduated from Parkway Central. My husband graduated from Parkway West. All three of our children started Parkway in the early childhood center, and our oldest will graduate from Parkway Central High School this May. I've been involved in Parkway in a variety of ways for 15 years. All three of our children have IEPs, so I've been involved with the partnership between Parkway and Special School District. Three IEPs every year. That's a lot. It also gave me tremendous insight.
Thank you. Ms. Seltzer?
Good evening, I'm Kevin Seltzer. I'm running for school board. Hopefully, some of you have seen some of my yard signs, or visited my website, or Facebook page. But for many of you, this is the first, and maybe only, opportunity you'll have to learn about me as a person and as a candidate. I wanna tell you about who I am, why I'm running for school board, and why I think I'll be an effective board member. I also wanna give you a brief overview of some issues that matter to me. I'm a Parkway graduate from a Parkway family. I'm married to a Parkway wife, and we're raising Parkway kids. My son is a kindergartner at Craig, and my daughter is involved in Parkway's early childhood program. My kids are still very young, and we look forward to many years in this district. Now, in addition to being a husband and a father, I'm also a lawyer. Now, I know I may have lost some of you right there, but allow me to explain why that's actually a good thing. Most people think lawyers, I think all lawyers do is argue. And despite what you may see on TV, that's not what we do. If all I did was argue, I wouldn't be in this business very long. Good attorneys are problem solvers. We accumulate information, we objectively analyze the facts and the rules, and then try to broker a consensus that meets our clients' objectives, and that everyone can live with. These are the skills I will bring to Parkway. The willingness to meet issues with an open mind, the ability to achieve workable solutions, and the personality and acumen to advocate for this community. This evening, you will learn more about me and what I care about. But before we get started, I wanna highlight a few issues that do matter to me. Parkway should be a place where all students have the opportunity to succeed. I look forward to working collaboratively with the faculty, the administration, to achieve that goal for all of our students. Parkway should have a robust curriculum that resonates with students from all backgrounds. It can be tailored to kids with special needs, whatever they may be. I'm a big believer in programs that promote character development, and emphasize experiences outside the classroom. School safety is an important issue to me, and one I'm sure we'll discuss tonight. And finally, as a board member, I want to represent the entire community, and that means advocating for us all as taxpayers. Thank you.
Good evening. First and foremost, I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters and the Parkway Central Middle School staff for hosting us tonight. Also, I want to thank an unsung hero within Parkway that you may not have heard her name, but I'm sure everybody up here on this panel is aware of her. It's a lady named Nikki Stover, who has been taking care of, directing us in all sorts of ways, and arranging to get us the contacts, to get the answers we need when we're trying to get information. She's done an incredible job. So, I'd also like to thank my wife, April, who's here tonight. Thank you for your support. April 4th, you will get to see me again. And if I'm elected on the board, you won't, you may not see me again for about three years. So, I'd also like to thank the parents and residents, and members of the audience tonight for coming out to listen to what we have to say, and share your questions. I'm a little bit different than a typical board candidate. When you think about board of elections, you think about, it's educators, it's people with background in academics. That's not me. My background in academics is I went to Parkway. For the last 15 years, I've been, I've got experience in operations planning, and have track record of effective development and implementation of methods that result in increases in quality, increases in efficiency, and decreases in cost, without, you know, making the final product suffer. The reason I'm running tonight primarily is I'm a parent, but also I'm a taxpayer in the district. I'm not gonna sit up here and tell you I have all the answers. I'm here to lead. Being a leader means grit, means recognizing that I do not know everything. My job as a board member will be to listen to the parents and residents of the district, and represent them as best I can. I look forward to the evening with the other members up here, and look forward to the questions from you all. Thank you.
My name's Matthew Schindler, and I am glad to be here tonight. I'm excited to be running for the Parkway School Board. I'm running because I wanna keep Parkway a destination district. My wife and I moved into Parkway because of the schools here. Both of our daughters have gone through Barrett Elementary, and right now, I have a sophomore at South High, and a sixth grader at South Middle. And we've had a great experience. So, right now, I've been wanting to consider a run for the school board for a while, and I thought this was a year to do it. And in terms of my qualifications, my career has been built around serving others. I've worked for nonprofits my entire career. After we got married, my wife and I served in the US Peace Corps. I was a business volunteer. Upon returning back to St. Louis, I helped refugees and immigrants start businesses at the International Institute. Then I moved to the Partnership for Downtown St. Louis, where I helped promote retail, office, and residential development. My current job is I'm with Gateway Greening, the Executive Director, bringing both communities and schools out into nature, using nature as a tool for education. So, I have served on various boards, and I have worked for various boards. And I think that's a skill that's important, coming to a school board, in terms of knowing what administrators need, and need to be supported, and how the interaction works with them, and working with the school board. Because we will be one of seven people on the school board. We cannot control, we can't change at our whim. We have to work as a group. And that's an important thing, an important skill to have, to have someone on the school board. So, I'm here tonight, hopefully we can get some good information out to everybody tonight, and I want to emphasize, vote on April 3rd.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate forum, and thank you to the Parkway Nurses Association and the Parkway National Education Association for your endorsements. I really am grateful and appreciate your support. My parents moved to Parkway School District in 1978, when Parkway was booming with four young children, just as I began kindergarten at Sorrento Springs Elementary. As my parents' family grew, we relocated to a larger home across Manchester Road, and my seven siblings and I all went to Claymont West Middle and graduated from West High. This year marks the 40th consecutive year that my parents' children, or my own children, have been students in Parkway schools. We are committed to Parkway. I have been a Parkway resident nearly all my life. I'm a big believer and advocate for public education, and I truly appreciate the education that has been provided here to myself, siblings, and children here in Parkway. Since I have so many siblings, I have siblings that live in lots of other areas of the country, and I can tell you for sure that what we have here is stellar. My husband and I have three children. One who has graduated, one who will graduate this year, and one who is an eighth grader. I have spent a great deal of time in our schools over the last 14 years volunteering, currently as the PTO president at West High, in nearly every imaginable way in our schools. I also work as a substitute teacher in Parkway, and feel that my strength as a candidate lies at the intersection of these experiences, as a student, as a parent, as a volunteer, as a substitute teacher, and as a former accountant. My goals are for Parkway to continue to be a leader by setting the bar for other districts to have an excellent public education. As a school board member, you have my commitment to increase transparency in our finances and curriculum, and my commitment to be an open voice for every single student in our community. I am committed to strengthening our community and schools. Thank you for your consideration and interest in this election.
Thank you, alright. Well, that was fun. Are we ready for the tough stuff now? Alright, we'll just start off and jump into the frying pan. And this question will go first to Mr. Seltzer. What actions do you think need to be taken to ensure the security and safety of all students in the district with the growing threat of gun violence?
Can we get a minute?
You have one minute.
Obviously, school safety is a big issue, and probably a big reason why there's so many people in this room tonight. As a board, there's only so many things we can do. There's things that can be done to address gun violence in the schools in particular, at the state and federal level. But as a school board, what can we do? Well, there's one thing we can absolutely do, which is to keep guns out of our schools. It's an issue that up here, I'm not sure if we're all in agreement on, but it's something I feel very strongly, and guns have no place in a school. Our teachers are paid to teach, they're not security guards. Frankly, they have enough responsibilities that arming them and asking them to take down intruders. But what can we do? We can modify our buildings with an emphasis on security. We can make sure that our staff and our students are prepared in the event of an incident, that people know what to do and what is expected of them. And those are some of the things that we can't do as a community, and so those are things I would like to focus on as a board member. And finally, I think we can include the students. I think the lesson of Parkland is that these students, these are their schools, and they have a voice, and they should be heard, and they should be involved in the effort to keep these schools safe.
Thank you.
Hot topic right now, obviously. Lot of different opinions throughout the room, and everybody's very passionate about this. I have my opinion on what I'd like to see done as an individual parent. However, I'm only one parent in the district. I'm not the parent of 17,000 different kids. So, the first thing I think we need to do would be to open a dialogue with the parents to find out what the parents want the district to do. We're not gonna be able to find a perfect solution that's gonna keep everybody happy, but I think that it is important that, you know, we open that dialogue first, before just starting to make decisions. Personally, what I would like to see is not arming the teachers. Teachers are there to teach, that's what they went to school for. What I would like to see is expansion of the current program that we use in our partnership with local law enforcement, to increase the presence of SROs. Currently, we have one SRO per middle school and high school, and we split SROs between approximately one for every two elementary schools.
I do not support guns in the classroom. I have not had a single teacher come up to me and say, "I wanna have a gun with me in the classroom." There's one teacher came up to me and says that they're a veteran, worked in Afghanistan, and there is no way they wanna see guns in the classroom. And I support that. As a parent, I would not want a teacher in the classroom with a gun on their hip. So, with that, beyond issues in this building, as a good example, is the access points. And with the bond issue coming up this fall, there are discussions of using some of those funds to actually put vestibules at the buildings, to actually make it more difficult to get in, and reduce the access points. But one of the challenges we have is a lot of the schools weren't built for this new environment. They have many entrances. So, we'll take a challenge and take some resources to actually work on the physical pieces of the school to make them more secure. But I will say, every day, I have no qualms to send my daughters to Parkway schools. They are working very hard to keep the schools safe, they're working on new ways to do it right now, and I'm very happy with what they're doing in Parkway.
Sure wish I had more than one minute to answer this question. I agree with much of what Matt said. I think the most important thing that we can do is to increase the vestibule entries at our school. The question was, what steps can we be taking? The number one thing that I would do is to make a double vestibule entry at every school. Right now, it's in the proposal for the high schools and middle schools. I would like to see that expanded to the elementary schools. Often, we feel like spending money on safety is money not well spent, until you see something like the Florida incident, and we cannot wait any longer. I'm not supportive of having guns in classrooms for teachers. I have been a sub, and in no way, shape, or form would I want to take on additional responsibilities of caring for my students with a gun. And I don't even know where we would put them. It's a little bit terrifying. I feel like we'd be handing them to students more than we would be protecting them. I also think that there are other things that we can do with locks and ways to change our classrooms, so that if there was an intruder in our schools, we would be better protected. Thank you.
I would like to speak to this quickly. As a former teacher, I taught third grade at Marion Elementary in the Rittner School District, and as a PTO president who spends a great deal of time in this particular building, I think, as a board, one thing we do have control over, we only have control over three things, curriculum, budget, and hiring one employee. One thing we have control over is the budget. Security needs to be a number one priority. When your house is on fire, you don't buy new carpet, you put out the fire. I think what we need to do is make sure that we adapt our buildings with vestibules, and with other immediate remedies for security. Whether or not teachers will eventually have guns is not something we need to focus on. Whether or not we deal with the gun issue right now, what we need to make sure of is that the children are safe, and that there is a plan in place in each school to make sure if those children are faced with something, that they're safe.
Thank you. Alright. Speaking of money, because that's what it would take to do just about everything that you all mentioned. And this will go first to Mr. Taylor. What are your opinions of state funding being pulled from public schools, and going to private and charter schools? Good question.
The money coming from the state comes from not just the parents of this district, but from parents across the state. The topic of school choice, a lot of states are moving towards it. It's definitely gonna be something that faces the district. So, the money is sent to the schools based on enrollment. You know, the concern that I often hear is if we go to a program of school choice where parents can get vouchers and send their kids to private school, that we're gonna see an exodus from Parkway. I think what we need to be looking at is why is that even a concern? Why do we think that if parents are given a choice, that they would leave the district? I think we need to look at the root cause of that, and ensure that if the parents are given a choice, that they have no reason to leave, that instead, we see parents coming from private schools and back into Parkway.
I am completely against school vouchers. I think the issue is more deeper than just choice, the fact that it's a financial issue. If Parkway's great, more kids could come here, and the resources may not be here to actually provide them the education they're getting right now. And part of the challenge too, is if you take the money away from the state to go to private school, there is less money for the state to give out. So, I am completely against any school voucher program. Public schools are a prized piece of our society. They are the underbelly keeping everything up. We need to support that. We shouldn't be pulling resources away from public schools. And right now, I think there's some concern in Jeff City, what's going on over there? And that we need to be very cognizant of what's happening, and be on top of it, and be proactive, to make sure the resources we have right now remain in place for Parkway, and continue into the future.
In case you aren't aware, there are literally hundreds of bills right now in our state legislature related to school issues, including vouchers. I support legislation that requires, I could support the school vouchers. I am in favor of choice in general. However, I have concerns about school vouchers, mostly related to accountability issues from schools. Most of the legislation that I have seen or interacted with does not require schools, charter schools, to have any sort of accountability. And they don't have school boards that they are accountable for, for those taxpayer dollars. That is concerning to me. Instances where I would support some school choice would be for students who don't have good schools. Parkway recently was able to take in some schools from the Normandy School District when it was unaccredited, and I am thankful that we were able to provide fantastic opportunities for those students.
I agree. Charter schools, in theory, are wonderful, and there are select few that do a wonderful job, but they do need, and they require more oversight. Many of them, all of them, are actually for profit. There is not the same oversight, and if they go out of business, then the students don't have anywhere to go. I think vouchers are a great idea for one reason, because we, as a board, have direct oversight on behalf of the taxpayers. And if the taxpayers are not satisfied, or their children need to utilize a private school, absolutely, they should be able to have a tax credit to send their child to that school. It does not necessarily mean it takes funding away from public schools at all. And there are many bills currently in the legislature, in the General Assembly, and they all have different...
During my opening remarks, you may have heard me talk about how I like to keep an open mind, and get all the information, and come to an analytical decision. And that approach, I think, will serve me well in lots of issues, but not in this one. I believe in our public schools. Our public schools need all the resources they can get. Tonight, you're gonna hear us ask a lot of questions about things we'd like to do, and programs we'd like to support, and we're all gonna tell you lots of great ideas we have to make these schools great. And those things all take money. And all the money that these public schools can get, and Parkway in particular, it should stay in the public schools. So, I am firmly opposed to that, and I'll use this as an opportunity to keep the night moving, and seize my last 30 seconds.
Alright, moving right along. This question will go to Mr. Schindler. New topic. Several questions in this area, I'm going to combine them. What do you see as the role for social justice in schools, and would you support a student walkout in favor of a cause? Mr. Schindler?
For the walkout, happening on Wednesday, I support it. I think it's a great show of unity among the students, voicing their concerns, making their voices heard. I think that's extremely important, and it's a great lesson. I'm glad the students are here tonight, to actually witness this debate too, because this is part of the process. I think in a larger realm, we've become disengaged with the political process some, and we need to get back involved again, and get passionate, and voice what you believe, and fight for what you believe. So, I fully support the walkout on Wednesday. I know the administration's been very supportive and helping, and working with the students to make sure it does go smoothly too, which is great. Social justice, yes, we need to support it. We need to find ways to benchmark it, and grade it, and make sure the resources we put toward it do go to the benefit we wanna see going forward. And I think one of the things about diversity in Parkway, and the experience my daughters have had, is what makes it special, the all the people, all the religions, all the thoughts. I think we need to have that as part of the district, and support it.
Please, we're not, we're not responding. I appreciate your opinions, but we're not responding.
Of course, I would support a student walkout. Students who want to peacefully demonstrate in any way have my approval, and I think it's one of their rights, Second Amendment rights as a US citizen, to be able to support or demonstrate in any way that would they, any peaceful way that they would like. As far as the role of social justice, I assume that refers to honoring all voices and appreciating the diversity that is in our district. And I can tell you, Parkway looks vastly different than it did 40 years ago when I started, and I think it looks better different. I am thankful for the many different types of people that we have in our school district. I am thankful for the many different types of people that we have in our school district and feel like together, we make a better network and a better community as we come to understand each other. Currently, I have a son living in India, and he's been there since last May, and it has been a joyful experience to watch him embrace another culture and other religions in a beautiful way. Sorry.
I believe that social justice programs should actually be expanded. I think that, at this point, they focus on certain populations of Parkway, and as the parent of three students with special needs, I truly believe that the programs that I've seen outlined by the Department of Diversity and People Population have tremendous merit. And I think that a lot of different populations, in fact, every student in Parkway, could benefit from some of the programs, if not all of the programs, that that department puts forward. I also want to say that the social justice, as an issue, begs to be divisive, and I think it's the opposite. I think it should bring people together. Everybody, every person, every parent, every student, every taxpayer, everyone with skin in the game in Parkway wants everyone to succeed. And I think if we look at social justice programs in a universal way, we can expand them.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and win the pool for being the first candidate to bring up the Parkway mission statement. But the goal of this district is to ensure that all students are capable, curious, caring, and confident learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. Somewhere along the way, the term "social justice" became something of a bad word, and to me, that's just inapplicable. If our kids are working to create a better world for themselves, then I think they're fulfilling that mission statement. They're adapting to the world they live in, and they're filling up all those Cs. So I firmly support advocating for and supporting our kids and their efforts to make their world and their schools better places. And as that applies to the walkout this week, I think it echoes the sentiment I expressed during the discussion of school safety. These are their schools, and if these kids feel strongly about these issues, then I think, as parents and as educators and as a community in general, we should all be really proud and really supportive of these kids.
Regarding social justice, I think the current definition or the current application is somewhat flawed, is it arbitrarily picks and chooses based on factors such as ethnicity, race, gender, sexual preference. And by that nature, it's saying that we're going to focus on these groups, but there's other groups that are left out. Last week, we met with, I was able to meet with the PACCD Parents Advisory Council for children with disabilities, and based on what I heard from them, there's currently nothing in there that provides any type of protection under a social justice model for children with disabilities. I think we need to expand it to include all children. As far as the walkout, I think there could be a better use of the time of our students. I appreciate that there's students wanting to get involved. It's great to see them paying attention to current topics, but I'm not sure what a walkout accomplishes. I think 17 minutes spent speaking in class would be much better useful.
Thank you. That's good. Please, folks, we're respecting, moving. Okay, next question. This goes first to Ms. Bonnet. Another topic, completely.
I am the parent of a minority student, and I'm wanting to know how you will address these issues. There are fewer minority students in honors classes. There are more out-of-school suspensions among minority students, and there are few to none teachers who are of minority status in Parkway. How will you address these issues? And that goes first to Ms. Bonnet.
How do you address them in one minute? Fewer minority students in advanced classes is currently being addressed by our school district. We are trying to identify students, actively identify students who may have success in advanced classes, and I applaud our efforts to do so. Minority students and out-of-school suspensions. I actually have a nephew who has experienced an out-of-school suspension for a lengthy period of time. And I know that being out of school is very concerning and very serious, and I hope that when we apply out-of-school suspensions, that we do it very carefully and that it isn't applied, of course, more to minorities than it is to others. I hope that we apply the same principles and actions towards all of our students equally. I'm trying to remember what the last part of the question was. Attracting teachers?
Yes.
Oops.
I will say that this is something, when we come to your closing remarks, you might want to, if you feel that some of these are really important points that people need to know about you, you might just jot it down, and I have pencils if you don't have one, so that you can bring that up in your closing statements, okay? All right. Ms. Ames?
I think one word that should describe Parkway's discipline policy is consistent. I think if there's zero tolerance for something, it should be applied universally. I also think that one way, in fact, U.S. News &amp; World Report only uses one methodology to find college readiness, and it is the ratio of students taking AP courses to the population of the school. And I think that certain programs we have, like bringing in different college counselors to help students that feel marginalized or students of color that don't have an opportunity anywhere else to get the training or the assistance that they need, those are valid and they should be expanded. And those are things we can do to help children, students, adolescents succeed in a way that doesn't take away from anything else and isn't something that makes them marginalized.
Ready?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. All right. So there's a lot to unpack here. Parkway, with respect to the minorities in honors classes issues, Parkway has started programs that Amy alluded to, and I'd like to see those programs expanded. The idea is to encourage kids that aren't traditionally been included in AP classes to involve them in those classes, give them those opportunities. The other thing that can be done is helping our teachers to adjust to this issue, helping teachers recognize inherent biases that we all have, that we need to be able to recognize to be able to help those kids get into situations where they can succeed. We need to give the teachers the training and the tools they need to promote opportunities for those kids. As far as school suspensions, there's been a big push to eliminate K-5 suspensions. I don't have a minute, it's not long enough to totally do this issue justice, but I think it's a worthy goal, but one that has to be buttressed with other changes in the way we educate and the way we discipline. Helping kids that are being disciplined not just have a timeout, but to help them have restorative justice, the opportunity to learn from their mistakes, to improve. And I didn't get to the third part, I'm sorry.
So apparently, we're learning one minute is not long enough. Prepping for this, I always thought a minute would seem like an eternity. So first, like I said, I'm not going to come in and assume I have all the answers. I'm not sure which studies are being referred to, but the first thing I'd like to do as a school board member on an issue like this would be to understand the facts, look at what is the makeup of the district, what is the makeup of the individual area? Do we see any disparities with achievement between one group or another based on school? And then we can determine. Last week, two weeks ago, I met with Assistant Superintendent Becker, who is in charge of teaching, learning, and accountability. Based on the information I saw in that meeting, Parkway is improving across the board with students from all different backgrounds. The facts do show that there are problems. That is a fact, and that it must be addressed. And I think part of it is resources and working with the curriculum to figure out other ways to give the extra boost to get people to the AP level. And the same thing with the teachers, then, too, with the suspensions. If it happens and the kid needs more resources to help keep them in school rather than sending them home for a discipline issue, what can be done? What can we provide that student to make sure that they're getting the best possible situation around them and supportive situation to get them back in the classroom properly? And then with teachers, we want to make Parkway a great place to be and recruit all around. Make it a wonderful place to be, a diverse place to be, a welcoming place to be, and make it attractive. That's part of the challenge we do have, but I've heard issues out there that it might not be the most attractive place sometimes, being a minority coming into Parkway. We need to change that. And as part of it's a culture shift overall to make it much more welcoming and it should come from the top down, starting at the board all the way down to the students.
Thank you. All right. Totally new topic. Ready, Ms. Ames? What is your opinion of the health and sex ed curriculum in Parkway?
Okay, that's definitely not going to fit into a minute, but let me just be very clear that any sex ed program should be opt-in, not opt-out. Currently, when, this is something I experienced personally, and I've spoken to parents, the attachment for the sex ed part of the curriculum, when your teacher sends home the letter that you're supposed to sign, in order to opt-out, the letter is actually titled "passive opt-out," which means they're actually expecting you to be too lazy to opt-out. It should be an opt-in. It should be science-based. It should be age-appropriate, and it should be something that is absolutely relevant to the ages and developmental level of the students.
Well, I can absolutely do this one in a minute. We've had this debate already. Everyone had an opportunity to be heard. The district adopted the new curriculum. It's in place. Parents who wish to opt-out can do so. I don't see this as an issue.
Folks, I understand the emotions. Please remember that everybody here has a right to ask a question, right, and be heard, and several, several, several people are putting questions about this topic. So let's just let the answers come, okay? Thank you.
Well, we often talk about being inclusive, and I believe the current program is not very inclusive. I'm not going to say that what I want my child to learn is what your child needs to learn, but what I am saying is that we need to make sure that we are providing programs that represent all sides of an issue. Parkway's a big district. Parkway has great resources, and we offered "take it or leave it." And the parents I've spoken with, there are a lot of parents that feel that their voice was completely left out of this, and their only option is to opt-out. I agree with Jeannie. We need to be able to opt-in, and we need to offer multiple options that achieve the results that the parents are looking for.
This is a settled issue. The board voted on it a few years ago. It's time to move on. And right now, for me, I went to two of the curriculum nights this year to actually learn about the health curriculum. It is age-appropriate. It is science-based. It is what I want my daughters to learn. And the fact that is, the internet's there. They're going to learn one way or another. I want them to learn the right way. I want them to have the facts that are science-based and age-appropriate. And it can be tough. It can be very tough. And I've had some parents express that concern to me, some pieces of it, but it needs to be there. So I am in full support of it. It is in place now. Let's leave it there.
All right. For those who may be unaware, there's a long history here, but two years ago, our health curriculum was changed and modified to include more LGBTQ issues. And this was in large part to address the LGBT community in our schools. And for those who may not know, there is a very high risk of self-harm by our LGBTQ students who feel misunderstood. And so I am supportive of people learning more about that community. I am also supportive of people who choose to opt-out of this curriculum and choose that it is too much for their kids. I feel like sex ed is something that people should talk about with their kids. There are kids in every class who aren't ready for what is going to be presented. My son had a kid throw up in his class in fifth grade watching the video. I think parents need to be actively participants in this part of their kid's education and decide what's appropriate for their child and help their children learn to understand and embrace all communities. Sorry.
Thank you. All right. These are all different topics. Okay. Moving right along, let's talk about something fun. Starting times for schools. So, this goes to Mr. Seltzer.
Well, I know I had some issues with this during my academic years, but like the other four candidates up here, I do not have a background, a professional background in education. I also don't have a background in planning bus routes or scheduling a school day. So I'm not going to stand here and pretend that I have some insightful answer to this question about school start times. As I recall from a student, it seemed like it was awfully early, and I know I wanted it to be later in the day. But that aside, it's one of those things where I would like to, as a board member, really get input from the people whose job it is to study this issue and sort of rely on those people's expert opinions in coming to a decision on this issue.
I currently have one child in Parkway. The start time works for me, but there's a lot of other parents out there, so we need to make sure that it works for you. I have not looked into this that deeply. We've got a lot of hot topics that have been at the forefront that have consumed, I'm sure, much of the time of myself as well as all the other candidates in preparing for them. However, I do recall one parent that I met with that had mentioned with regard to start times that there may be some benefit to the older students starting at a later time, and those are things that I'd like to look into to get a better idea of. The other thing is the logistics of it. Parkway is moving 17,000 kids every day. That is not a simple task. They do it well. Mr. Bill, our bus driver, is there on time every day in the morning and on time every day in the afternoon, so they're doing great, but we do have opportunity for more conversation.
I'll embarrass my daughter right now. I think her wake time has a five-hour differential between a Friday and a Saturday. It is tough, and I do think there are options to look at.
Is a campus-style approach to it. One of the ideas I've heard is could you move to more campus-style, college-style approach toward the scheduling? But it is not going to be easy, both with the buses, with the teachers, with the after-school activities, with athletics, and with games. But I think it's something we should consider and take a good look at, because I do believe the educational process could be improved by a later start time for the older students.
Although that ideal sounds super interesting in theory, I don't know how you could make it work with the amount of activities that high school students are doing. About five or six years ago, Parkway redid its bus schedule and start times, for those who recall. At that time, I had a child in high school, middle school, and elementary school, and boy, was I frustrated. And I felt like I lost a lot of family time because I was seeing my kids off for two hours every morning and seeing them home. Reality is, our bus schedules operate to accommodate moving our 17,000 students every day, and unless we all want to drive them and provide transportation both ways, we are probably looking at keeping it the same. We don't have a lot of choice. We have a limited amount of buses unless we want to buy more buses. And there's also a bus driver and a bus shortage in the area, which includes problems for our high school students providing transportation after school to their sports already. So I don't see a great solution to this problem. I feel like Parkway did a good job reviewing it a few years ago.
Thank you. Okay, another area that's getting some, what do we say, track hard?
Do I? Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. I let my kids sleep in all the time, so I don't need to answer about that. No, I'm kidding. I think, actually, start times, I think everyone here understands, it's a logistics issue of moving the kids as effectively as we can. And also, although I have seen studies that say start times later for high school students benefit them, but I really don't see how that would be possible, like Amy said, with their afternoon activities and with the activities that occur in the different school buildings. I think Parkway does a great job. I think it was a difficult decision five years ago, going to the tier program. I think it's difficult. I think it's hard for families. I personally, my husband and I, have three kids in Parkway in three different buildings almost every year that we've been here. And so it is different start times, different end times, and although it's difficult, there's not a lot we can do about it. And it's just one of those inconveniences that having 17,000 students, we do a pretty good job with how they're doing it now, and like Kevin said earlier, I don't find it an issue.
Thank you. Okay? All right. Next question. This would go first to Mr. Seltzer. No, Mr. Taylor. Okay. We'll change that. All right. Because the board, one of their main jobs is to hire a superintendent or let a superintendent go, what do you see as the most important qualities that you're... go, what do you see as the most important qualities that your superintendent needs to possess? Mr. Taylor?
Well, I think in determining with a current superintendent, it's the results. When you lead an organization, it's about getting results. Are we getting the results that we want? Are we getting the results that the parents want for their kids? Are we seeing the level of college preparedness increase? Those are the things that we need to assess with the existing administrator. If the time came where we were ever looking for a new administrator, I'd be looking for the same thing. Results. What have you achieved? What have you led the district to? You are the face of the district. You're responsible for all those under you. And ultimately, as a leader, that is your role.
Okay. As superintendent, their job is tasked to fulfill the strategic plan, the project Parkway, to fulfill that plan and the goals set forth in that. That is a standard of way to judge whether doing a good job or bad job. But it comes down to the crux of it is, is the administration, are the teachers, is the leadership there from superintendent to move everything forward as a whole group? Because this is 3,000 employees. This is a massive organization, and a lot of issues, a lot of students. It's not an easy job. There is definitely, it's a punching bag to a degree. I'm not sure I'd ever want to be a superintendent. So, for that, though, having the support of the teachers, administration, and looking at the results that would come out of the strategic plan, and making sure that we're following that, and then when we redo the plan, that the goals are still worthy of moving Parkway forward into the future.
Would you mind resetting the question, please? If I can find it? Thank you, yes. Because the board's main, one of the board's main responsibilities is to hire the superintendent, what qualities do you think a superintendent should have?
Okay, thank you. I think the most important quality that a good superintendent could have is being a servant leader. I think that people in our, I think that administrators, principals, teachers, want to work for somebody that they feel will advocate for them and work alongside them, and empower them to do their jobs. Instead of that of a power leader that basically dictates and tells everyone what to do. That would be the first quality that I would look for in hiring a superintendent or in looking for in the superintendent. Another thing that I would look for is accountability, and recognition of problems, and the ability to recognize our failures, and admit that we have problems, and determine what we can do to make them better. And I think having somebody who is willing to have those discussions is an important, I think that's another important quality of a good leader.
I think one of the most important qualities of a leader is to seek first to understand, and then seek to be understood. And I think that as a superintendent or leader of any organization, accountability and performance are dependent on your ability to listen to a variety of voices, a variety of opinions, and temper that with your experience and your leadership to figure out what the best road forward is. I think working behind closed doors, eliminating certain voices, and only listening to a few, is not productive. It does not produce the outcomes for any organization. And I think it's also no way to show accountability. And I think that accountability is critical for any leader. So it's listening, taking a variety of ideas, and accountability for the performance and outcomes.
Thank you.
So Parkway's got something like 17,000 students, 2,000 to 3,000 teachers, a budget of about a quarter of a billion dollars, and about 100, over 100,000 residents, some of which don't have any direct interest in the district. It's a massive, massive enterprise, and your superintendent is tasked with running that, running this entity. But it's not traditional business. There's more than just a bottom line to think about. A school superintendent is tasked with implementing Parkway's, or Parkway superintendent is tasked with implementing the mission statement, which I talked about earlier, about what we want for our kids. So what do you want in the person that fills that role? Any number of things. Same thing you'd want in a great executive. You want intelligence, you want leadership, the ability to communicate, accountability, someone who's present, someone who can inspire the people and the staff and the students of this district. Those are all qualities that I think Parkway's been blessed to have, and the leadership that they currently have, and qualities that I hope the leaders to come will have as well.
Flip side. What are the qualities of a good school board member, and why is that you? Mr. Schindler?
I'll say through this campaign, it's listening, as we described. This is a $230 million organization, 17,000 students, 3,000 staff. We don't have all the answers. And part of that issue, too, is the fact that we're only going to be one of seven. We're not going to change the world. And we need to go out there and listen, learn, be a conduit for the residents, and the parents, and the students, through the superintendent. That is our only employee, and we should stay there and not get into the weeds. We are at the policy level. And I think that for a school board member, it's to be accessible, to be honest and open. And I want to hear your ideas. It's been actually really fun, to a degree, to run around this district and learn from you. Because I've learned a lot, being in Parkway South with my daughters, I've learned a lot about northwest and central. It's been fun, and I look forward to that, hopefully, on April 3rd, the vote, and to continue to learn more going forward.
I agree that Matt has identified some good qualities of a school board member. Being a good listener and making yourself available to people are both important things. I think being able to collaborate and work with lots of different people is very important for a school board member, and I feel like I've done that as I volunteered in our school I feel like another important quality of a school board member is somebody that has integrity, and will live up to the things that they say, and somebody who will work hard for our community.
Actually, I believe that the school board, by definition, is a board of oversight on behalf of residents and taxpayers. Our three responsibilities are budget, curriculum, and hiring superintendent. I think that the curriculum issue, we work on behalf of the students, and that means listening to a variety of voices, parents, students, teachers, residents of the district. And the budget, we work on behalf of the taxpayers. And I think one thing that our board could do a much better job with is acting as stewards of taxpayer money. And our residents, who actually fund the school, and our parents who fund the school, deserve a fiduciary relationship with the Board of Education, so that the money is being spent well, it is being spent in areas that are necessary, and not being spent on frivolous programs.
I'm going to disagree. I don't think the role of a board is solely oversight. We're tasked with a lot of responsibilities, but one of them is to be advocates for this district and this community. I, like the other candidates up here, spent a lot of time in the last few weeks and months talking to parents, talking to citizens, talking to just lots and lots of people in this district. And one common thing I've learned, or one thing I've learned, is that the thing we all have in common is all of us went to school. And so we all think we know how a school runs, and we all have an idea of how a school should work, and we all have opinions about what's going on in our kids' school, or what should be going on. And as a school board member, as part of our job is being advocates for this district, it's to listen to those parents, listen to the teachers, listen to all the stakeholders, and make them feel heard, and make them feel like their values and the things they care about are being represented by us as a board. So when you're looking for qualities of a school board member, yes, there's a lot of the things that we've heard up here, everyone has said, but it's also the ability to cooperate, the ability to listen, and the ability to create a community, and advocate for that community.
Well, the school board has three very specific tasks that they are assigned. The most important thing that we have to do is act as representatives of the people of the district. If anybody has a cellphone here, get it out, you'll see why in a minute. What we need to do is make sure we're accessible. We've often heard people say, "I'm going to be accessible, I'm going to be here to listen to you." And then, once elected, they are no longer accessible. So many times, I've been walking through the district, and I have had multiple people, I've been knocking on doors, and I've had people say, "I have never had a school board member come to my door. I have never met a school board member. I really appreciate the fact that you're reaching out." Now, if you have your cellphones out as a demonstration of the level of accessibility that I'd like to provide, I'm going to give you my personal cellphone number. Feel free to call me at any time. Despite the fact that we may disagree, I will always be willing to talk.
Are we finished? Is that, are you finished? Oh, okay, alright. Thank you. Hot topic, lots and lots of cards on this topic. It deals with students' rights. I'm just going to read you the cards, and then I'm going to give you a summary question, okay?
Okay.
Do you support the protection of all students' civil rights? How will you ensure that people of all backgrounds, races, religions, sexual orientation, et cetera, will feel safe and included? How do you feel about students wearing religious attire in schools? Do you support the protection of all students' civil rights? And there are several more. Obviously, this is of concern to many people, so I would ask you to address the issue of student civil rights, and the board's responsibility to uphold those rights. And first person is Ms. Bonnet?
Yes, I support student civil rights, and I support students being able to wear whatever clothing they have related to their religion. And I actually honor people who are willing to do that, because I know that it often comes with scrutiny and biases when they do so. I think all students, I hope that all students can feel safe and included in our school environment. I feel like the best way that we can model that for our students is the top-down, to model inclusiveness for our students, from the administrators and the teachers down to student leaders. I find it unfortunate that we have so many students who feel unaccepted in our schools. And I think that that goes across the board to many religions and diverse backgrounds. I know that Parkway is working on training their staff to be able to overcome seeing bias when they teach, and I hope that that is reflected by our students as well.
Of course, every student, every citizen of Parkway, their civil rights are of the utmost importance. I think it is important that all voices of all students are heard, and I think from personal experience, I know that there are certain voices that are not tolerated. I think tolerance is an issue more so than civil rights. I think civil rights are yours. They are indisputable. I think tolerance is something that everyone needs to work on. Everyone. And I also think that, at this point, the tradition of Parkway is inclusiveness, and we need to expand that inclusion to every population of Parkway, every voice, every diverse opinion. And that, right now, is being shut down, in a lot of different classes, in a lot of different ways. And I don't think people are willing to talk about it, but I think that's important.
I'm sorry, can you reread the final, what the ultimate question was?
Maybe? How would you, this is, again, I paraphrase to this topic. How would you, as a board member, support the civil rights of all students?
I feel like this one's just deceptively easy. I feel like, obviously, all of our students are entitled to their civil rights, and as a board member, we're not doing our job if there are students in Parkway that don't feel included, and don't feel welcome, and don't feel like this is a place where they belong. I think a couple of us have alluded tonight to the sort of limited role of a board. We hired, fired a superintendent, we have input on policies and procedures and budgets. What's our role in protecting the civil rights of our students? Well, I guess it's to ensure that there's policies and procedures in place that allow those kids to feel welcome, to feel included, help teachers to get the training they need to make those, to accomplish that objective. And, you know, it's a role that parents, the community, all of us have, to help our kids feel good about going to school and welcome here. And as a board member, I will absolutely do my part to enable our teachers and our staff to make this a place where all students feel welcome and like they belong.
Well, thank you for asking for the question, to be right again. I was going to ask that myself. I think it's important that, obviously, all students' rights are appreciated and are afforded to them. We don't need issues of discrimination for any group. We don't need disparity in treatment for any group, regardless of what that is. Each child is entitled to an education despite their background. While the board may not directly be involved in enforcing this, where we are involved is in the selection of the superintendent, and what are the policies, what is the direction that the superintendent takes it? And then, who is the leadership that is put into place underneath to be in the schools, the teachers, the principals, to ensure that those rights are afforded? And if they aren't, then make sure that we're reviewing it and taking it seriously to ensure that they are.
Okay, thank you. Alright.
I get my chance sometime.
Boy, I'm way off, aren't I? Okay?
Alright. I'm in full support of teachers, students, staff, administration, to be in a caring, supportive, inclusive, safe environment. That's, and civil rights is definitely part of that. And I think that needs to be not just something we say, but something we try to build upon. It's getting better in our society in general, and it's getting better in Parkway, but there's still things we need to achieve to make it a much more inclusive, much more caring environment. And I think part of that, too, is, as a board member, we should lead by example, and our actions should reinforce those things.
Completely different topic. Let's talk about curriculum. Okay. There are concerns. Some of the college readiness scores are low. There are students who are underperforming for various reasons. What can you, as a board member, do to address this issue, to, I won't say solve, that's too easy in a word, to help the district deal with this issue? And I believe that goes to Ms. Ames first.
As a former teacher, I can speak to this directly. I have, I had the privilege of being a student teacher in the Ledeau School District, and they utilized a learning styles quadrant, which produced amazing outcomes for the student. And currently, the framework in which our curriculum is being taught requires students to think the same way, and show that they're able to solve a problem in a specific way, and then get the answer. That's what Common Core is. It's about everyone doing the same thing and learning the same thing. It is not how students learn. Students learn by their own learning style, and there are several different ways. And I think as a board, when we examine, when it's time to examine each different subject matter and the curriculum in which they are presented to students, we need to keep in mind that students learn differently, not the same.
To me, the premise of the question suggests that Parkway is somehow failing, that our students are underprepared, or scoring lower than they should, and that somehow the teachers and the students of Parkway aren't doing their job and aren't being successful. And I wholeheartedly disagree with that. Over the last few months, I've met with teachers, administrators, and there's a passion in Parkway for adhering to our mission statement. There's a passion for developing kids that not just excel in the classroom, but excel outside the classroom that are quality citizens. I think this district is doing a great job. Obviously, we can always do better, and I will support programs and policies to improve our performance as a district. But if you're looking at pieces of paper and coming to the conclusion that Parkway somehow is failing at its task, I just absolutely disagree with that, where this district offers innumerable programs to help our kids get ready, not just for college, but for life.
First, with regards to Parkway, I don't have the statistics right here in front of me. First thing I'd want to do is see how we are performing as a district, to identify. I'm not a curriculum expert, I said that at the beginning. I'm not an educator, but, so in this case, what I would do is seek to understand from those who do understand and rely on their guidance, to determine how do we move forward if we are failing in a particular area. And speaking with one teacher that I met several weeks back, she explained- And speaking with one teacher that I met several weeks back, she expressed some concern that the curriculum is somewhat restrictive, does not provide for the teachers to be as creative to meet the different learning needs of the different students. We all learn in different ways. Myself, the four other candidates up here, everybody in this room, all learn in different ways, and we need to provide teachers with the ability to customize their education to meet the needs of the students in their classroom.
I agree with Kevin, though. We are sitting, we're blessed, we're in one of the greatest school districts in the state of Missouri. Great things are happening here. Are there rooms for improvement? Most definitely, there always will be. We'll never achieve perfection, but this is a great school district. And looking at the numbers, you may find some places where it's dropped a little bit, but overall, I am extremely satisfied with the direction of Parkway. In terms of the curriculum, yes, there are some issues possibly to bump some scores up, and part of the challenge, too, is with students these days, they are bringing more into the classroom. There are more issues and more needs that need to be addressed. And part of that's resources, and figuring out, looking at the budget, and determining how to make those trade-offs, with make, to provide the extra resources, to get the extra high scores, to get a little extra boost. It's not gonna be easy, but for the most part, I'm very pleased with the direction of Parkway is going right now, and I think we can do much better, too.
The most important thing a school can do for a child is to teach them how to read and write well, and to be able to compute well and analyze data. Those characteristics are learned at a very young age. Kids need to be able to do well at those at elementary school. The most effective way to do that is to make sure that we are appropriately identifying kids that aren't doing this well in elementary school. Facts and studies show that kids who don't read well by the end of first grade, in fact, are still behind in fourth grade. Ninety percent of them never really recover to a reading level that they should be. So the number one thing I think that we can do is to focus hardcore on those four things. I have a son who received an appointment to the Air Force Academy and received a Parkway education and got a good education here. But he did so because he was able to attract onto advanced classes. You can't do that if you can't read and write well when you are in elementary school. And so the number one thing that we can do is get push-in support for our students.
Alright. Now, talked about some problems, challenges. I'd like each one of you to give three things that are fantastic about Parkway, alright? Mr. Seltzer?
Just three?
Just three. You only have a minute. And you can just, you could just say one, two, three if you want to, because I have lots more cards.
Something I've talked about earlier tonight that I think is fantastic is the opportunities that we give our students to excel outside of the cla, outside the traditional classroom. There's programs like Sparks that allow kids to pursue their passions, whether it's in business or some other, health or some other endeavor. And we give these kids the opportunities to not be boxed into a traditional classroom reading the textbook, but to actually get involved in an endeavor outside of the building. I also think that something we do fantastic is character development. We're not just producing kids that excel in academics, we're trying to create quality citizens. I'll tell you, my son is a kindergartner at Craig, they have a program called Moonlight Calls where they go to the principal's office, and the principal called me, and I have a flashback to the principal calling my parents, but it wasn't for that, it was because he was doing such, being such a good kid and a good citizen, and they were highlighting that, that he was promoting, that he was exemplifying the Craig core values. So, the emphasis that this district puts on character development is something that I think is just wonderful. And finally, I'll just go, well, I only got to two.
See, that's right. Okay, moving along.
First thing I'd like to go back to giving out my phone number to the people that have been calling me, my phone has been ringing nonstop. I am currently busy, so please leave a message. So, three things great about Parkway. I think one of the greatest things is the history and the legacy of Parkway. Parkway's not just a school district, Parkway's not just some other school, Parkway's been a part of this community for over sixty years. It spans over sixty-eight square miles, and it has raised so many people in the district who still remain in the district. Four of the five candidates up here are Parkway kids that returned to Parkway to raise their kids in Parkway. Second thing that we have is great resources, the funding for Parkway is huge. And the third thing that we have that's great is our teachers. Every teacher I have met, I have been thoroughly impressed with thus far in my experience with my son, Jack.
Thank you.
Number one is teachers. We've had a great experience with our daughters coming to Parkway. The care and attention that we receive for our kids has been unbelievable, and the bonds that they've created with our kids, we're so thankful. So, that's number one. Number two is just the size of the school and the diversity, because it gives my kids opportunities, whether it be athletics, with clubs, with other music, with art, that's important. It's not just the core subject sometimes, you need to have that broad experience. I'm a big supporter of the arts and music also. And the last thing I think is one that kind of gets overshadowed sometimes, sustainability in the district. With the buses being in natural gas, solar panels, those are good for the environment, but they save us money, too. That's huge. We're one of the only two districts in Missouri that has natural gas bus fleet, and we're saving tons of money because natural gas is cheap right now. Those kind of innovative things to do, to actually make the district better and also save money is important.
This is a great question, I could talk for a long time. The first thing that I think is great about Parkway is our staff, not just our teachers. I think we have caring staff, I think we have caring counselors and awesome people who want to support our kids. They give up their time, they give extra hours, they truly try to meet the needs of our students. I think our students are the next great thing about our district. I think they are curious, I think they are trying to learn things, I think they are learning how to work together, they are learning how to support each other. I think we have tremendous students in our school that want to do great things, and given resources are doing great things. I love watching them win awards, I love watching them develop talents, I love watching them develop relationships. They are awesome. The last thing that I think is awesome about Parkway is that we have a lot of community support. Four of the candidates up here still live here. We love Parkway, we love to be here. I think it's fantastic that we live in a school district that feels such great support by our community.
I think by far, the number one thing that I absolutely love about Parkway is the proactive way that, I'm gonna speak to this building specifically, the administration, Dr. Bogus, they are so proactive in getting to know every single student that it is one of the ways they can identify strengths, needs, kids that are natural leaders and can be utilized in a way to help model with other students, kids that might be having an issue or at risk. They truly take an idea and they're proactive about it. I think also, the service. There is so much service promoted. Our son who's graduating this year has been involved with Special Olympics every year. He's done mentoring classes where he is helping, he has special needs, he was diagnosed with autism, and he is helping kids in PE classes that need a mentor. I think the service that is provided, or that is modeled by the staff is amazing. I also think the partnership that Parkway has with the special school district has been phenomenal.
Okay, I'm just gonna throw in a little bit of trivia here. The principal, I believe that would be Dr. Bogus. His mother and I were in Campfire Girls together. His father and my husband played on the state championship basketball team in Iowa.
Full disclosure, I did not know that when I mentioned him.
Long, of course, that's years ago. Alright, we happy again? Good. So, another issue that we have a lot of cards on is science. I'm going to ask you if you can succinctly describe what you believe would be an excellent science program. Alright, you know the issues. This goes to Mr. Taylor first.
Well, I'm not a scientist. That's hard for me to say, because again, I'm not a educator, to put into words what exactly that would entail. I can tell you that I would be able to see it if it was in place. I think kids right now, they miss, they, there's not as much focus on the STEM subjects, the science, the fact-based, the numbers-based, the research-based programs, and a great science program would, I think, overall, provide the students the ability to effectively and in an organized manner analyze a situation and come to a factual result.
I think for a great science program, you need the tools and resources around it to really push the boundaries, to try new things, to learn new things, and to be able to judge it in a fair way. And I think right now, with our society right now, things are evolving so fast that we need this piece in our kids' repertoire and in their knowledge base of how to experiment, how to try things, how to test things. And that's what I think part of the resources we have at Parkway makes it nice. We do have resources, we do have opportunities to even get outside the classroom, to really experience science outside and test things and learn things. So, for me, it's the ability and opportunity that provides in the program to really explore.
My kids are students at Parkway West where I can say that we have a fantastic science program and some amazing teachers, and my kids have been beneficiaries of that. As the great granddaughter and daughter, granddaughter of two geology professors who spent their lives studying science topics, I love science as well, and I'm thankful for what Parkway can offer them. Resources are essential to teaching science well, being able to have lots of resources to do experiments and adapt, adapting those, especially in chemistry, I believe that's important. But I think teachers who want to creatively teach and enthuse their students are equally important to having resources. We have a few teachers at West High who are very creative and very fun in teaching science, and I think their enthusiasm translates onto having a great class and great curriculum for our students. I think the last thing is to be able to cover a variety of topics in science and to be able to have lots of different science course offerings. Thank you.
Our oldest son, who's graduating this year, will be attending South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. He will be studying geology, geology and getting his master's in paleontology, which is something he's wanted to do since he was three. And that has been reinforced throughout his experience in Parkway. Science is one of the very few subjects that children can learn from failing, and I think that's a lesson that is missing a lot, that it's okay for something to not turn out correct the first time, and you retry it and it will. I think the science curriculum and the science teachers that Parkway have are amazing, and I think that the way we present science should be hands-on, many different experiments, many different experiences, and I can just speak from experience with my son, that it has never been something that was lacking in Parkway, and you can look at the Parkway Central Science Wing, and it's amazing, and it's something that Parkway actually has done so well, and we're very impressed with it.
Well, I'm not gonna pretend like I prepared for this question, because it was not something I considered that would be asked tonight about a science department. I can't imagine that the expectation is that us as incoming board members are knowledgeable enough about the education in the science field that we'd have the correct, an intelligent answer to this question. So that leads me to ask, why was the question asked at all? And I think it is hinting at asking our opinions on the teaching of creationism or intelligent design in our schools. And I'm gonna assume that that was the intent of the question, and to answer that, and my answer is emphatic, no, I would be opposed to that. Any science department in any Parkway school should be about teaching science. They say when you get a clap, you should stop talking.
Okay, alright, this is gonna be your last question coming up. I'm gonna leave the thirty or forty cards on the desk because we have one last question and then we have their statements. So, ready? This goes first to Mr. Schindler. Easy in one minute. What is your vision for Parkway for the next five to ten years?
The first thing I'd say, though, is the bond issue coming up, because we do have old schools, they're aging, and we need to find ways to make as many repairs as possible we can with our limited resources, and do the security around them, too. There's a lot of physical pieces we need to get in place over the next five years for the Parkway schools. And then, beyond that, I think we need to keep pushing the boundaries with our education and curriculum, to experiment, to be innovative, to be data-driven and science-based in what we do, but really push the limits, push the limits of education outside the classroom. I think there are a lot of exciting things going on right now in education, not just St. Louis, but across the nation, that we could bring to St. Louis and bring to Parkway, and really give that new experience and a new ability for kids to learn in a different way, to really prepare them when they graduate, to go off into their career or go to college.
For the next five to ten years, I'd love to see Parkway build upon the great foundation that we already have of having a fabulous school. I will continue to try to offer the best alternatives for our students, and I think that some of those mean adapting our curriculum to reflect careers that will become and are more popular in the future. As we do this, we might find ways to help our students prepare for more jobs in the healthcare industry, or in computer and related digital careers by supporting robotics and engineering. I would also like to see Parkway embrace foreign languages that maybe are more prominent in our, in the world, actually, so that our students are more prepared with skills that might be more applicable and helpful to them when they graduate from high school. Overall, I think we have tremendous curriculum and we're starting from a great place. I think we will continue to have good students. And I'm done.
I think immediately into the next five years, we absolutely have to address the security issue, I think that's gonna be an ongoing issue. I also think that it's important, as we think about curriculum, that we need to bring back what a lot of people refer to as traveling skills. We need to increase our college readiness, but we also need to realize that not every student that graduates from Parkway wants or needs to go to college. There are other opportunities, and we need to make sure that they are prepared for those opportunities. And I think going forward, it's equally important to make sure that our innovation and our technology and preparing students for college is just as important as preparing students for life and to be citizens that may not be going to college.
Well, as I was preparing to answer this question, I was doing the math to determine that my daughter will be entering high school in ten years, so I'm just gonna frame how I answer the question to extend, just to get my head around it. But, in a serious note, what's the vision we have for Parkway? I would like to see Parkway continue to expand the programs that make us different, the programs outside of the classroom, the programs that promote character development. And I'd also like to see Parkway expand the way we use technology to teach our kids, because school's not the same way it was for many of you out there when you were in school, and certainly not the way it was for me when I was in school. Our kids have access to resources that we couldn't dream of. You know, we hauled a textbook back and forth every day, they're gonna take a laptop. They have the ability to access whatever content they could ever dream of in a moment. So how do we pivot from an educational system based on downloading content to an education system based on using that content? I think that's the challenge facing this district, and I'm hoping that five to ten years from now, it's a challenge the district has reached, and we've accomplished the goal of adapting to an ever-changing world.
I think, I think the first thing that I'd like to see is gonna be an ongoing challenge because of the way society's evolved, technology's evolved. I'd like to see an increase in the focus on, on mental health for the students. Students going to school right now are facing an environment that is nothing like when we went to school. When we went to school, you had your friends, you had your books, that's pretty much it, maybe you had three or four channels on TV. Now, kids are being exposed to all sorts of just examples of horrible acts on the internet, and we're not preparing them psychologically for how do I cope with those. They're being exposed at a younger and younger age. I've heard from parents who said, my friend, or my daughter's in fourth grade, her friend brought a phone over, and she was just appalled at what they were looking at. And so we need to make sure that we're preparing our kids for the future by giving them the mental health and stability they need to deal with it.
Alright. While our candidates are calming their minds for their closing statements, my client, my chance for a little plug about the League of Women Voters. Most of you know what we do, this is what we do. We register between fifteen hundred and two thousand voters a year. We do over seventy of these. We do over eighty presentations on various topics. But the only way we operate, of course, is because of you. We operate because people donate to the League. We're a nonprofit, we have no revenue streams. If you would like to contribute and help us continue to do this, which we need to continue, we have some envelopes you can use over on the table, we would appreciate it. If you'd like to join us, we'd love to have you. We have over a hundred new members in the last year after events that have taken place, which has been really exciting. We're, right now, we have a group of teachers registering high school students around the county, in St. Charles County, and we're, every time they go- go out to a high school, we register like between 50 and 75 high school students, and that's exciting, too. So, good things are happening, and good things are happening here at Parkway. So, we're going to start closing statements with Ms. Bonin. Yes?
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for having us tonight. I'm running for the seat on the school board, because I believe in public education and I love Parkway, and I see my efforts as an extension of the time that I have devoted to our schools over the last many years. I believe that the kids in our schools are the future of our community and nation, and I have committed nearly all of my time for the last 20 years to my family and our schools. Our schools and, and students and children deserve our very best efforts. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I come from a large family. I have 23 first cousins. Together, we could make up a sample classroom. One of them is gay. Five are adopted from four different countries: Korea, Vietnam, El Salvador, and Guatemala. One was a Rhodes Scholar. One was a Gates Scholar. Two received their GEDs. We have grown up to pursue varied opportunities, careers in medicine, education, cosmetology, and everything in between. My parents have 29 grandchildren right now under 20. Together, we could make another sample classroom. We have students, together, my siblings and I have students diagnosed with anxiety and depression, some with IEPs, some with ADHD, others in gifted programs, some who are leaders in their schools as student body presidents, and some with disciplinary issues who have even been forced to change schools involuntarily as a result. As such, I feel that I have great familiarity with the huge amounts of differences that exist amongst our students and the variety of needs that exist in our schools, and I will leverage those experiences to be an excellent board member. I feel strongly about teaching our core curriculum well, about teaching love, compassion, empathy, and inclusiveness to our students, and I promise you that I will work hard for every single student to be educated in the very best way, particularly in the core topics during their time here at Parkway. I hope that you will support me with your vote on April 3rd. I look forward to serving on the school board.
Thank you. Mr. Schindler, you're next.
Thanks to everyone who's here tonight, and everybody watching online at this time, too. I was talking to a board member who said that their forum had about 20 people in the audience, and they were all the relatives of the candidates. So, this is great. I'm glad you're getting engaged in this election, because board elections, school board elections to a degree, and not everybody's involved in getting to know the topics and the issues. And this is a very important election. There are two of us up here that could actually be at this table next month, which is kind of scary to think. So, it's happening fast. There's a short campaign cycle, so I encourage you to become informed of all the candidates, what our viewpoints are, what our actions are, and what our history and experience is. And for me, I hope you look at my experience. I have been, had experience overseas, had experience here in St. Louis, working with diverse cultures, with education, with business, and working in nonprofits, understanding the role of boards, both as being on a board and then working for a board. Right now with Parkway, I want to make it sure it's very clear that when decisions come up that are tough, that I will place the kids first. And not just kids first, but all kids. When we look at decisions, when it comes down to dollars and cents, we're going to need to figure out where is the greatest impact with our dollars going forward, because it won't be easy. There will be decisions made at this table that will affect a lot of people, and how are you going to prioritize those things when you make those decisions? So I do encourage you to reach out to me. If you go to MatthewSchindler.com, reach out by email, Facebook, look at my comments and my priorities for this election. And the most important thing I'm going to say, since you're all here and online, you should vote on April 3rd and bring three of your neighbors. I want to see a huge turnout on this April 3rd. Thank you.
So, thank you all for your time. It is an impressive crowd here tonight. Great to see so many people engaged and involved in the, in the community and the school district. The conversation tonight has highlighted that there's some definite differences between us as candidates, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. We've got a big district, you know? If, if I were running to, you know, be on a board where we're all going to agree 100% of the time on everything, I'd be sitting there on the board by myself. You know, we're all always going to have a difference of opinion, but what I think is important to, to keep in mind is that we need to be here to listen to one another, to have civil conversations, and respect that we can have differences of opinion, but more importantly, identify what are those, what are, what are those key elements that we do have in common where we can work together to move the district forward. I appreciate your time, and always, again, feel free to reach out to me. I would love to hear from you. My voice is but one voice as one parent in the district. As a board member, I will never work to force out the voice of any other parent. I will always work to make that the voice of every single parent is always heard, regardless of what that is. Thank you.
I want to begin my closing remarks by thanking Erin Seltzer. She was my date to the 1999 Parkway North Prom, and she's also my wife. This campaign and this position take up a great deal of time, and I wouldn't be able to run or serve without her support and understanding. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this event. I want to thank my colleagues up here for participating. I want to thank all of you for attending, and I want to thank all the many families and citizens that are at home watching online. We filled a big room tonight with a lot of ideas and a lot of people that care about this district, about our kids and about our schools. I feel honored to be a part of this race and this district, where so many feel so passionately about helping our kids succeed. We all want the same thing, for our schools to be safe, for our kids to achieve, and for our tax dollars to be spent responsibly. The candidates up here, and those of you out there, may disagree on some issues, but we're all engaging one another to try to achieve those objectives, and I am happy to be a part of that debate. This forum has been a joy to participate in, and I hope that I was able to convey to all of you who I am and what I believe in. On April 3rd, I hope you will vote for me and give me the opportunity to give back to this community. This district has been a big part of my life and will be for years to come. It's a special place, and we're doing great things. I look forward to being a part of it and serving our kids, our schools, our Parkway.
I, I would like to take this opportunity to address just two specific issues, one at the elementary level and one at the high school level, that I think are very important that the board would, should, and will deal with. One is class size. I think that is something that is extremely worrisome and a huge concern to all parents in the elementary schools. I also want to say something about the graduation decision that was made this year. Both of those are directly related to board decisions. They're directly related to decisions that should be made with parent input and were not. And I think that as a board member, what I strive, what I will strive to do is make sure that decisions are made with an open-door policy, that all voices are heard, all opinions are heard, no one is shut out, no opinion is shut out, and decisions are made based on what is best for the district. And I think it's really important for it to be said that right now there is a tremendous amount of a population of Parkway that feels like they are not being heard, and I think everyone should be heard. And that would be my goal as a board member, is to make sure that decisions are not made behind closed doors. And I really appreciate you guys being here. That's what I would do as a board member.
And I want to assure you, all of you, that all of these, all of these cards are going to go to the superintendent, so that he can see the questions that were asked and the ones that weren't asked also, okay? Now, let's give him a round of applause. Good job. Okay, April, coming up, you're going to go out and make democracy work, right?
Thanks. You, too.